All right. We will call the meeting, the meeting to order for the Board of Supervisors work session Tuesday, June 19th, 2018 at 4:30 PM in the main conference room. County Administration Building, 1 St. Street, Chatham, Maginot. Roll call.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Blackstone?
Boswell.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here. Are there items to be added to the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Say hey.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. For the citizens' convenience, all work session and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the same YouTube location. As the Board of Supervisors business meeting, please remember that the Board's work session is designed for internal board and county staff communication, discussion, and work. It is not a question and answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained. Respectfully, any outbursts or disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in the offending person's removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties as designated by these Board's bylaws are permitted to make comments under the hearing of the citizens' section of tonight's business meeting. Presentations. Do we have any more questions?
No.
Okay. Every time you touch up, it's jumping. We're down to staff committee and our constitutional officers' reports. Ms. Boswell's here to report from CPMT. Yeah, she is.
It'll be short and straight, I promise.
Oh, great.
This month. All there is is the attendance record. I'm required by our CPMT policy and by a resolution that the Board of Supervisors made in 2014 when we were making all of our revisions to the CSA policy that I report, our attendance quarterly to you all. That report is in, filed, and everyone is in compliance as of, uh, May. We have not had our June meeting yet, so as of May, right now, everyone is in compliance for the CPMT meeting. So, all right. No questions, any questions?
Are there any questions, Ms. Boswell?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the citizens, we're still working through our electronics move, and please bear with us, we're gonna get this thing straight sooner or later, but if you see us doing a little something, it's because we're still working out. Occasionally, we're getting thrown out, or every time one person moves, it seems the screen is jumping around on us, so, uh, please just bear with us. We'll get it straight sooner or later. All right, we're down to Wayside Park improvements update from Mr. Moore.
Good afternoon, Board members. I wanted to come today, give you some updates on Wayside Park improvements in Hur. Something we've been working on for several months to start to identify kind of a low-hanging fruit at the park there in Wayside. And made a presentation a couple of months ago to the town of Hur, so their council is aware of what we're looking to do as well. Briefly, Wayside Park in the location, just off 29, about a mile from the town of Hur, in between 29 and the town of Hur. It's about a 60-acre park. We've had it for a long, long time, a long time since I've been here. It's a recreation jewel that needs some TLC. When I first started here, over seven years ago, went out to that location, and it's an awesome site. It's a great piece of property that we have, and the time has come to start to make some improvements to it. It needs some TLC, but the bones are really good there. We have some funding in FY19 budget for the Phase 1 improvements, approximately $70,000. There, I've been, had some preliminary discussions, similar to how we kind of worked the middle school park project, and working behind the scenes on funding, and if the county can put funding in, can we find a match? So, there is a very good chance that additional funding is available via grants, through large, a large grant through a local grantor. That would be a match to whatever the county puts in. If there, we have $70,000, $72,000 this year. If there's an opportunity to increase that amount or roll that over year to year, then there's opportunities to take our funding and at least double the funding that we could do at Wayside Park. Again, similar to what we did with the middle school park project. Improvements to begin in the fall, winter to allow for the grant opportunities to play out. Wanted to make you aware of that. Also, we're looking at a park attendant. Back many years ago, I was told that when that park was a hotbed activity, we had a park attendant there that was someone local that would come over and tend to, I think they actually lived, Elton even, lived on, in a structure in that park.
The structure itself burned.
Burned, yeah. So, we're looking at a part-time attendant that lives in that area. We've identified at least one possibility that would go over and tend to that park because the only thing worse than not having something is having it and not maintaining. So, when we go in and we add things that you'll see here soon, signage, other things like that, playgrounds, we create expectations for the community. When we create expectations, we have to be able to sustain those expectations and maintain them. So, we don't want to create expectations and then just walk away from them. So, park attendant is something that we're looking to do as well. And just a note before we get into the specifics, Wayside Park is revered in Northern Pennsylvania County. People have fond memories of that location. You can talk to Darryl Dalton here, and he can remember his dad working for VDOT and having picnics and events there. But it's a revered park in Northern Pennsylvania County, and it's exciting for me to be able to breathe life into this park and bring it back to life from what it once was. Some of the things we're looking to do, that road front pull-off park area, you know, replacing that and picnic tables, adding trash cans, updating interior park signage, regraveling that pull-off road, just kind of freshening that up, giving it some TLC. Those tables are in good condition. We'll salvage what we can. The fire pits there, salvage what we can there, but that's on the front side of the park, right at the pull-off. The front entrance is in need of help. New front gate, there's a chain link gate there now that we open up Memorial Day timeframe when we lock up at the end of, either late, I think it's at the end of October, we lock that gate back up. The plan for that park would be to have it open year-round, and we can maintain it year-round, and we would not close it up at certain times. It would be a true park. The plan is to pave the entrance up to the gate, dressing up, cleaning up that front entrance. It's quite rugged there as you pull off of 29 Business into that park. The road front signage at the park, at the pull-off, that pull-off currently has a VDOT sign on it, and it looks like it's relatively new, but also add some road front signage at the park entrance that takes you back to the back part of the park. And also throughout the park, just wayfinding signage, just where things are, just adding signs, really not even updating, adding signs, there isn't really no signs to speak of inside the park. This, if you did a brochure for this park, the hanging bridge would be on the front of the brochure. It's a really cool thing. It's a hanging bridge that is, that is as old as the park, if not older. It was built, the slate that they used on that bridge was used, came from the creek bed. So, it's a really neat part of the park. It's a, like I said, it's a focal point as you pull down into the parking lot on the street side of the park. So, we would make some improvements to that. What specifically are those are, not quite sure yet, but we will be making some improvements to that to make sure structurally sound for years to come for people that are coming into that park. There's a trail to the right side off of the, as you pull into the front part of the park, there's a trail off the right side that an Eagle Scout did a number of years ago. It's really more like a pig path now. It goes down the right side of the creek that runs throughout that park. So, we would put some signage, add some signage to that and do some general cleanup bounds, maybe a little bit of expansion if possible as far as the width of it along the right side of that creek. It takes you around to the backside of the park near, at the bottom of the hill, near the pavilion and restaurants. There's a picnic shelter that is on the, as you go over the, when you go over the bridge, you go up the hill, there's a picnic pavilion there, shelter. We would replace the picnic tables in it, add trash cans, pressure wash stain, rehab the floor joints. That floor right there, right now, is, that you're looking at, it's hard to tell, but it's slate and laid and concrete, so it's got some areas of concern there. And also, we would probably extend that, that concrete pad out, out past the overhang of the, but generally, putting eyeballs on a pavilion looks structurally sound. The park has a number of fire pits in it. The one there on the left is kind of a slate rock fire pit. They are in, many of them are in shambles, and so we would look to replace those with something more commercial, similar to something on the right, something sustainable that, you know, can stand some wear and tear on it, but definitely something of a commercial grade. Restroom repairs. This restroom, the restroom is on the pavilion side of the park, opposite of where the parking lot is. You have to use the bridge to get over to that side. There's a restroom there that is rougher inside than it looks on the outside, so it needs.
Very rough.
It needs some, it needs some help, so we'll look to rehab that and see if we can save the bones of it and save us a few dollars because I know from the middle school park project, the restrooms are ridiculously expensive. Even if you want just a step above a portafolio, they're still really expensive. So, we'll just salvage what we can there, make improvements so that our wives and our daughters will definitely want to use that as opposed to having portos there instead. On the parking lot side, we would look to add a porto on that side. This restroom, you pull in, you park in the parking lot, you go across the hanging bridge, up a hill, and to the right is the restroom. So, the restroom, as far as its location in the park, is not ideal based on where most of the crowd would be initially. So, we don't have water, power on the near side of the park, opposite of where the restrooms are, so we would, at least in the short term, look to add a porto, I call it a porto shed on the parking lot side to add some portos in it. So, if you didn't want to go across to the restroom that's there, you can, you could at least have somewhere to go. And I say some kind of shed structure, because I have seen in other departments I've worked at, portos where we'd say, hey, someone would call in and say, we need a porto at XYZ Field or Park, and we'd say, well, we'll put one there. And come to find out, someone, because of the remoteness of it, someone had, kids had knocked it over and drug it into the woods and set it on fire. So, you need a way, setting portos out in the middle and open when you don't have eyeballs on the lot is asking for trouble, so we're looking to, you know, try to create something that would help the porto. That's the parking lot I'm talking about, that's the first parking lot, and that is the green box up in the left corner there. The parking lot is there. We would just rehab that, recut that out, regravel, similar to what we did at the Ringo Trail with the trailheads there. Just shape it up, add gravel and parking blocks. Again, the bones over are fine, it just needs, you need to remove some grass and kind of reshape it a little bit and make it feel a little... Vegetation, as you go into the park, down to the, where the hanging bridge is and the parking lot, there's some vegetation along the right side of the road that gets you near to the creek. We'll look at removing that overgrowth, and that will provide, it won't let you see all the way down into the park because there's a ridge or a knoll that doesn't allow you to see completely down into the parking lot, but remove some of the overgrowth and vegetation to allow for better visibility down into the park and just generally clean it up. So, this is an area, this picture's taken with my back to the creek and also to the swinging bridge, you're looking at the parking lot that is in the park. Those three little hobby horses there, I call them, they're probably older than I am or as old as I am, but that general area, looking to add a playground. The size and the shape and the amenities that that playground has are yet to be determined, and that size will definitely depend on grant funding. So, as we're able to take, leverage county funds with grant funds, that will dictate the size of the playground and swings. Access road improvements, this is another overhead. The red line is an access road. We'll look to make some improvements to that. That's, some could call it an access road, others could call it a trail. I mean, it's 10 foot wide or so, meets a little TLC, but that takes you around to the backside of the park. So, rehabbing some of that, making some service improvements to that. That would also help us with, you know, if there's handicap concerns or issues, that could also be in access to the backside of the park that you don't currently have because of the bridge and the creek. So, additional funds, I just wanted to throw some of these out here, possibilities, enhancing the playground, obviously, additional shelters throughout the park. You could put one on the roadside near the playground. I think, if you've seen any of the middle school playgrounds, they all have shelters that are right beside the playground, think of something like that. You could put a shelter up towards the road that you could house some picnic tables under. Bridge enhancements speaks for itself. Trail enhancements. Many moons ago, there was a ball field there. While I don't think that there's a need for a full-blown ball field with outfield fence and there's an infield there, I do think that it would be, it could be a nice addition to have a backstop there so that if you're out with your kids or your grandkids there and you want to throw a ball and not have to chase it into the woods or into the creek, adding some kind of backstop there in the field where the ball field used to be, that is definitely doable. And also, additional small restroom facility that's dependent on access to, that's dependent on budget stuff where you, mainly with utilities as it relates to cost, because grant funds that we would get for this, you'd have to, there would probably be some stipulations as to what it pays for and what it doesn't pay for, which is pretty typical with a lot of the grant funds for these park enhancements. That's a quick rundown of Wayside Park, what we're looking at to do. Still some things in the air, but we'll be aggressively going after grant funding here in the coming months. Already laid a lot of the groundwork for those grants, so there's, there'll be grant funding coming for this project. Amount depends on how much the county puts into it in the long term.
Questions for Mr. Moore?
I think it's 60, 60, 60, 60, more.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Moore, for outstanding job that you've been doing since you came into health. This county is indebted to you, and we appreciate your leadership role and model. And one thing I would suggest, that green building that looks dilapidated, that middle river was intriguing to me, and I see right there just a suggestion of the youth and the mothers get together and redesign that bathroom for themselves, okay? That's what I would say, and I'd be glad to move in and help. Thank you.
Mr. Blackstone?
Just like to point out to the board that the industrial, the new riffraff that we're forming owns a property that surrounds that park, except to the left. Behind it, in backup business, that is the new riffraff park that we are...
Basically, top of the hill.
Yes. So, it's on the backside, so hopefully, if we can get somebody in there, a major industry, maybe they would help us with the park long-term. That would be my, take some of the financial burden off the county.
Century that they'll call Park and Run.
Other questions for Mr. Moore? I just have one, Mr. Moore. I know you did a great deal of fundraising on the other parks. In one of those things, you had a relationship with folks that provided a lot of playground equipment. Is that option possibly available for the...
I know that's been two days ago, we talked about this project, so yes, that's definitely an option.
I mean, that, just for more information, I've had so much feedback from citizens about how much they enjoy having a shelter they sit under while their children are playing and enjoying, especially, you know, in particular, in the areas where they've got middle school program, football programs or something going, and the parent can take a smaller child up there. So, thank you very much for that effort.
Yes, they, that's definitely a possibility with this. The good thing, what we have going for us in our recreation is we have momentum with the park project that we just completed, and the funders in the area. We have momentum with playground manufacturers and what we did at these parks, so tying, building on that momentum, they're definitely interested because they know track record. It's not brand new now, they know the track record of the whole group.
Not necessarily related to the park, but from a recreational standpoint, with activities for teens and, I don't know about little league teams and all, is it much of that that goes on in the Hur area?
So, most of those kids go across the river. They go up, they go to the Altus, they go to Motley. They usually go north, so even coming down into Gretna and talking with people at Gretna who do sports, Hur usually, they either stay in there in Motley or they go north. They usually don't come back to Gretna. That's a generalization, and that's not an exact, but that's the kind of the feedback I've gotten is usually they go, they go north. Now, maybe they go north because there's nothing there that we provide for them, but nonetheless, they usually go north.
Well, you know, long range, I hope we have a plan to maybe encourage soccer league club to play there or something in that area would help the economic development and everything else. Folks do it so much. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next up is Mr. Slim.
How you doing, sir?
How you doing, sir?
It's true. I've had two vehicles today and two flat tires on the same road in each vehicle. I do have, you have, you've got this. EMS backup, just give you a brief update very quickly. Back to, first of all, continue, make sure you're aware that both Dean and Scotty back here have been really skill instrumental in helping every day-to-day right now, and the backup that we're using is working very, very well. Both those gentlemen have taken a lot of ownership of what we do, and I really appreciate that personally, it takes some of that off of me, and we're operating more and more like a system like we wanted to, so that's been a positive side thanks to that. So, we've only had a couple minor issues, I guess, vehicle-wise, and one of those was the private service, and the other one, players had a little vehicle problem, Talon's immediately phoned down and helped with that, so everybody's really stepped up and helping do that. Dean and Scotty are being, I guess, the best way to put it, they've been very good about motivating some of our volunteers and being motivated, so I appreciate that. We have one other snap there, overnight snap, we've got a water issue at the station up here in Chad, and we got that fixed very quickly too, so I appreciate Dean. To date, or excuse me, I guess, from January 1st to January 19th, just to give you an idea, our backup, all three of our backup units, around 127 calls during that 19-day period, so we're definitely getting calls, getting out the advances. And several of our other agencies have stepped up and providing a little better services with that. As far as moving forward, we started to receive our proposals from some companies, and quite honestly, I just literally picked those up this morning, I haven't even got to look at it yet. We'll start to evaluate that, and we'll probably move forward with them. And that's working, it's working very well, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Questions for Mr. Slim?
Has it been off an increase or did increase in the number of backup calls we've had to answer since we've been on the left? Is the numbers higher or lower? I know we only have 19 days so far to look at the data, but I'd be interested to know, is it more or less?
The volume of news has picked up a little.
So, it's...
Insert, yeah. We still have the Hur area, even the Hur area, that truck is in, in the area, so, in the area. And maybe great work we could have had.
And the second question I would have, because I have a constituent in my district, she calls off social medias. She didn't think the article in the newspaper was clear that it was public money being used to pay volunteers, and so I want to make that clear that it is, because we have to, we have, this is a service that the citizens expect and require. And this was really the only option, feasible option we could find, and I think they all done a wonderful job out of it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Slim, the job you've done. Thank you, Mr. Fowler, Mr. Adams, for stepping up and taking on the additional responsibilities of what you all are doing, and please pass on the board's appreciation to those volunteers that also stepped up to work with you to help make this little transition through this and get through this, and you'll all be better on the other side.
Been working on July's schedule right today, you know. We're here to serve the citizens of Kansas City.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, next up is Mr. Hicks.
Okay, you, last month, you heard a presentation from the pastor in the Gospel Tavern at the Outbreak Center. You expressed an interest in possibly leasing that church, the Gretna ball field, and the money keeps cutting out too. You have a proposed, a, let's see, one-year lease agreement, and that will be renewable for eight additional one-year terms. The lease would be for a dollar per year, and if the board has any objections, we propose to hold a other hearing at your July meeting, and if there's an inclusion in that public area for the lease, you know, for that ball field, they will assume responsibility of all of the maintenance of the property once that lease is signed.
And just to add on, Section 9 is of note. They, they really desired to purchase it, however, they, they didn't have a lot of dry powder because they just had to put a roof on one of their buildings. But any of the repairs they do to the backstop or anything, they're going to keep a log, and at, and at the time, it's conflated that they or somebody else may purchase this property. But at that time, we would use the appropriate mechanism to ensure that it was fair that we sold to them or some other entity. So, right now, it's seven point five acres or roughly, and we currently, as a county, are not doing a good job of maintaining. We maybe cut the grass once a year, and we've let it go to kind of rack and ruin, and we view this as a way to have community benefit and someone assist us with maintenance of this ball field.
Any questions from Mr. Hicks or Mr. Hunt on this side?
I want to make sure I understand this, because it gets a little, it was just off to discuss it, but facts are in. This is the ball field across the street from the old North Side High School, but like, it runs out to the apartments. It's just the ball field itself.
Just the ball field. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hicks, we're down to solid waste disposal fee implementation, Mr. Sides.
All right, Mr. Moore, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to kick things off, I won't be the only one speaking, but just to let you know, and I think everybody's aware, that Mr. Smithman has formed a joint solid waste, solid waste committee to look at all of the issues associated with making this program work in its most efficient manner. Make sure that we meet all of our requirements, and everything happens on time, and everything be well thought out this time. So there's the overall big committee, and then that has been divided out into several subcommittees. They consist of operations subcommittee, enforcement, administration, and public relations. And each committee has a chair, and I think you'll get a brief update today from each of those chairs, just to give you a feel for how we're working. I wanted to start off with administration, and, and just to let you know that, well, let me look at who's on my committee to give you a feel for that. I've got Mr. Hunt, Mr. Shorter, Ms. Hammack, Mike Henderson, our building inspector, Kaylee Simkus, and Kim Vanderhage. So, we've got a pretty good representation of administration, and we're looking at basically how to implement, how to make the system work. What, you know, what forms need to happen, be put together, what notifications, scheduling, that kind of thing. And update you on some of that status report, I guess. Ms. Hammack has been largely responsible for coming up with our, and anybody, please feel free to jump in behind me, that, what you get is a form that we need for the uninhabitable structure exemption. If someone has a home that is unoccupied, will kind of be lived in, and they can file for an exemption to be exempted from the solid waste fee. And we've got a form that we will have online, we've got a building inspector has, has had his input as far as technically to judge what is inhabitable or uninhabitable. So we'll be putting that online fairly soon. Another program that we've talked about is there's multi-unit facilities, whether they be apartment complexes, mobile home parks. And right now, this, you know, the solid waste fee has to do with the real estate, so some of these folks that own multiple units or multiple lots are going to get a bill for, you know, a substantial fee. So there is a provision in the solid waste ordinance for private collection. If you, if you put in a dumpster, or if you have collection within your complex, and that goes to somewhere other than the landfill, then you're exempt, you can be exempted from the solid waste fee. And we discussed that in our committee, how to make that work, how to get the word out, and again, Ms. Hammack has come up with a proposed letter that she's aware of these multi-unit facilities. And to be able to send them a letter to give citizens a heads up, to say, this is kind of, you're one of these people that owns a multi-unit facility. We are proposing to implement a September first deadline for this first year. Now, this is something that will, will carry on throughout the program, but the first year, there's no real clear mechanism for people to opt out. So we're, we're asking, I guess, your approval, just in terms of consensus and how we put this together, that we'd like to say, set a December, I mean, a September first deadline. She'll get the letters out to everybody, and it's done in such a way that, you know, yes, I provide solid waste collection, here's a copy of my contract, and instead, get that back to her by September first, and you will be covered under the solid waste ordinance. So, I'll mention that when there's some of these things that we need to do, we need to tweak the solid waste ordinance. But this is more of a policy implementation, and I guess we wanted to get a consensus, hopefully the board is okay with us moving forward with this September first deadline for the multi-units. We feel like it's going to answer a lot of the concerns of the mobile home parks and campgrounds, and I think it's, he was a friend of it, so, I, everybody feel like they think that's a way to move. That does not involve a change to the ordinance.
Questions from the board?
That's a recommendation from the, from the committee, just as how we feel that would help the citizens accept all of this.
Any, any questions from the board?
I have one question, you mentioned that if they had a service, I mean, had to dump red box instead of green box, and that. How about if services bringing the, is picking it up, getting paid to pick it up, but they're disposing of it in the county? That provide, that, that guy that picks it up is going to pay taxes to the county?
Right.
So, is that going to be the mechanism where we're going to collect instead of collecting from that property owner?
Yes, and, and that is...
Because you made it sound like, at least I interpreted that it had to come from, it couldn't come to the landfill. It can come to our landfill, but we're going to receive the proceeds for that tonnage from whoever's bringing it to the landfill.
And that's example of where I say we need to tweak our ordinance to make some of these things flow smoothly. Right now, the ordinance, as it was originally written, was geared towards, you didn't have to pay the fee if your waste didn't come to the landfill. But now that we're moving forward with the multi-unit, this multi-unit policy, some of that may come to the landfill, but they'll be paying a tip and fee if they do, and the county will be compensating it that way. So, we're not going to make a drastic change, but we are going to tweak that section of the ordinance that makes that clear, so we won't be any confused.
Do you mean a motion to what you're looking for, or you just look for consensus?
Just the consensus is all we need.
Consensus of the board, let them move forward?
Well, what we will be coming to you for in the future is some ordinance changes. One of the things, for instance, that our committee's talked about is, again, making this as seamless as possible, that we're proposing that the bills, for instance, will go out in December, as has originally been planned, but could be not overdue until the next June. So you would have a longer period of time citizens would be able to pay all upfront in December, or they could split it in December or June, or they could even make payments in June. That would involve a little tweaking to the ordinance, and right now, we've got some dates in there. But that's what we're working towards with the help from Mo Shirley and Vince, we're, you know, working out what we need to do in terms of, are there any software changes that need to be made, or so, where are they? And then working with Mr. Hunt on what ordinance changes would need to be made. Those types of changes in ordinance, we will be coming back to you, and hopefully at the next meeting, really needs to, the ordinance changes need to happen in June, July. Each committee is individually looking at, in terms of enforcement, in terms of operations, look through the ordinance and see what in there needs to be either added, deleted, or amended to make the things work. So, everybody's going to be tasked with looking at the ordinance from their particular standpoint, and trying to get it done by the next July meeting. So that's how we're looking at covering payment, that's how we're looking at covering the multi-unit facilities, you know, our application's pretty much ready to go. Some issues will address a little bit longer term, like online payment, right now, that's not something we can stamp our fingers and do, we'd have to work to keystone to do that. But it is a goal in the future to be able to pay online and go right into the same pay system that the county's using now. So, I think that covers administration, unless somebody thinks of something that we completely overlook. And I'll pass it on, I was passing the debate, we're talking about enforcement.
Well, it's easy to understand.
Well, before we pass the debate, any questions? I just have one comment, Greg, I'd like to see as your committee goes forward, that updates are made, from just shoot emails out to the solid waste committee, on what would pertain to them?
The board's solid waste committee.
Yes, and, and the legislative committee send out stuff that's legislative related to them, so they're, they're updated, know what's going on.
Okay, sounds good.
Mr. Blackstone?
Just a comment, I know in a discussion, or Mr. Barber chairs that committee, but we were concerned, there were several of the board members were concerned about the fee being completely viewed in December, a hundred and twenty dollars on taxpayers in December, that close to Christmas. And the second payment of taxes. So I applaud the committee for looking at ways to be flexible with the taxpayers, and so that they're all, hit them all around Christmas. And I, well, Vince, you're, we're going to be making the payments, I know it's probably more work for you, I know that the taxpayers appreciate it, and I as a taxpayer appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep my money, Vince, until it's due.
I hope not everybody knows.
You always hold your money.
I'll pay mine, it just depends on how much money momma gives me.
Thank you, Vince, you have the floor.
Yes, I drew the short straw, and I am chairman of the solid waste enforcement subcommittee. And members of that subcommittee are myself, Mr. Sides, Sheriff Taylor, Karen Hayes, Susan Dillon of Animal Control, Scott Bode of IT, and Ms. Simkus, our PR contract employee. Several issues were identified in the primary big solid waste kickoff committee, and we had our first formal meeting yesterday on the eighteenth of June, and I distributed this sheet that you can review. I emailed out an after-action report, I neglected to send the legislative committee to the solid waste committee, I will rectify that tomorrow. But we've identified a certain assignments. The first issue is contractor abuse. Ms. Hayes down in planning and zoning, she's creating a form that's going to be neon in color, and when anybody, any contractor gets a building permit, we're going to put that in their packet that explains thou shall not dispose, you know, how to properly dispose of construction debris. Also, Ms. Simkus, she is going to work with Holly, and they're going to contact D-Board, the Virginia Department of Occupational Regulation, and get a list of all contractors that work in Pitts Vaney County, because we don't have a business license, this is a means of identifying them. And she's going to send a letter out that explains what we're doing, what we've changed, kind of a warning letter. We all have agreed that the signage at our dumpster sites is woefully lacking. It's either missing, damaged, smeared off, inconsistent, and so, actually Mark Moore and, and Mr. Hicks, Mark Moore due to his signage expertise, and Mr. Hicks because this falls under his committee, they are cataloging all the sites, what signs are missing, they're going to get new uniform signs made. I'm an outsider, but when I go to one of these sites to look at it, I, I think it's confusing what to do with a lot of the sites, and so we're going to make it so that if an alien came down from space, they would know exactly how to, how to use our dumpster sites. What you're going to find out in later presentations is that Mr. Smitherman and Mr. Hicks went to Bedford County, and they've got a multi-year head start on us, but they said that it just takes being strict and good signage, good sites, and it changes human behavior. And before you know it, the people know exactly what to do, how to operate, what to separate, and it makes things go smoothly. So the, the next item we identified is law enforcement visibility. Sheriff Taylor has agreed to sign, assign more patrols to stop into problem dump sites, if, when we identify which sites he will commit to assign more patrols in that area. Scott Bode with IT, on sites that we have towers, he is in the process of getting Wi-Fi installed. And so sheriff's deputies, we're going to encourage them, instead of driving all the way back to Chatham to do their reports and emailing the reports, to park their car out of the way, but at these dump sites where they do the reports and email them in, instead of having to backtrack all the way, sometimes thirty, forty miles to Chatham. It's kind of the seven eleven giving away free coffee to police and our law enforcement officers. We think having the more presence there will make people tone the line and change their behaviors accordingly. Mr. Bud is working on getting Wi-Fi hotspots at our dumpster sites. Out of county trash, Ms. Simkus is, is starting a PR campaign, where we're going to notify contractors, use social media, use local news stations, and do stories, and get the word out that times are changing in Pitts Vaney County. Mr. Bud is working with Sheriff Taylor and Seth Scares at the sheriff's department about cameras are going to be placed at the sites. And if we're going to utilize the footage from these cameras in court, we have chain of custody issues, and we have to make sure that the cameras are of sufficient clarity to be introduced in evidence. The sheriff already has chain of custody protocol about body camera footage and other camera footage, and so Mr. Bud is working with Mr. Scares, Seth Scares, so to make sure that if it captures someone doing something they're not supposed to, that we can introduce this in the evidence and be successful in a prosecution. Body cameras, for our five pilot sites, Sheriff Taylor recommended that we issue body cameras to the site attendants, so that if somebody acts like a knucklehead, they can just push the button, and it uses in court. We have, he has two left over from the Harris project, we're going to need to buy three more, they're not that expensive, and Mr. Bud is working on that, and then we're going to get our site attendants training on how to utilize a body camera. We, we don't want people to get in, in violent confrontation if people are doing something wrong, but we want them to push that button so that we can utilize this footage to prosecute these individuals. And just like the cameras on the poles, these body cameras, there's strict rules about how long you have to keep them, to get access to the videos, there's chain of custody things that we're working on. Dumpster diving, again, Sheriff Taylor utilizing the cameras agrees, is going to agree to write more tickets if we have cameras of people dumpster diving. Also, the signage will assist us to discourage that. Romy enforcement officers, Mr. Hicks, in addition to our five man sites, we're going to have, I don't know, one or two people that are going to roam these sites, and they're not going to be static, so nobody's going to know where they're going to be, so we'll keep people on their Ps and Qs. Litter, this is, when we shut these five sites, we're afraid that bags of trash are going to pile up with the gated sites. Mr. Bud is working on getting a camera outside the gate to identify people who are littering, throwing the bags outside. Also, we're going to have a training session where the sheriff and Mr. Hicks are going to educate attendants, we're going to, they're going to be going through those bags and trying to find who this trash belongs to for prosecutorial reasons. I'm taking the pitch to the judge, before we launch the prosecutions and launch enforcement, I think it's appropriate to, to educate the judge what's, what our ordinance says, and, and see if he has any issues with anything we need to tweak out of ordinance, so that he'll feel comfortable. If the facts lead into the, to prosecute people for violent solid waste ordinance. Stickers, we, we batted around whether to issue stickers or some kind of something on the car, or cards to access our sites. We ultimately determined they might be unnecessary if all the other issues are implemented, but we didn't take a position on that. We know they'll be costly and might be inefficient, but we're going, we punted that to the full committee for discussion at future date. And again, the asterisks at the bottom, as Mr. Sides said, now that we're walking down the solid waste path, we are going to have to tweak our ordinance a little bit. But that's what my committee and enforcement committee is working on. I have assigned tasks to people, and we'll meet again the next week to ten days, and I will send updates to the board to notify them about progress. Anybody got any questions?
No, Mr. Scares?
Just wondering, what are the hours, I know some of the sites have been closed, I've already gotten phone calls, and what are the hours? I've already gotten phone calls and what are the hours?
We haven't plugged any, yeah, the other name, Mount Cross. I mean, our Compacker broke down.
Oh, okay.
Had to have a new motor installed.
We have not gated any, okay, at this time, but there is a proposal to seven, to seven, but that has not been instituted.
Well, I know that was one of the things when they called about concern about the hours too. Is there any way to have it passed, some of the, I guess this guy's concern was they work getting home late at night. It's usually nine o'clock before they can get in.
Mr. Hicks is working on that. He'll bring a recommendation to you again and then we'll have the board act on that. It very well could be different days, there have been different times or where I have to call.
No, no, we're not blocking you.
Other questions from Mr. Hunt? Mr. Hunt, I have. I just have a, I guess a suggestion maybe. As we're pushing this message out, I think it'd be really good to push a strong message that our sites, only Pittsburgh County residents, so, and push it out in the media areas of our surrounding communities too. We don't want them to have a surprise. We want them to know upfront. This is the bit.
Yes, sir. We talked about that actually today in an event meeting, that all areas were around the lake and stuff, we're gonna send letters to certain communities that are, we know are abusing our sites and even offer to potentially sell them an out-of-county ticket for an increased fee, well over one hundred and twenty dollars per year to maybe utilize our sites. We also, Ms. Simkus is doing a very good job about coordinating our PR efforts, so that message is gonna get out.
I like that idea of that lake, but I also would say that, you know, that North Carolina edge gets a lot of abuse. I know yours gets a lot of abuse.
We might extend that to chambers of commerce and other things, but the signage, there's gonna be, I think it's proposed at Kiosk, we're really gonna prove our signage, it's gonna be very clear that the cameras are operating and who can and cannot throw trash away, because right now it's not.
Just a point, I know sitting here on previous meetings, we talked a lot about North Carolina handling, but I talked to the operator of the facility there in Rip. He says there's a lot of people, contractors coming out of Algebarstump dumping there in Rip. And I assume it's going on in Miami too, because.
We're gonna reach out to our neighborhood counties and explain that there's a new day in Pittsburgh County associated with trash. Any further questions? Why turn it up to another Subcommittee?
How much are the fines gonna be?
Well, that's something we've discussed with the sheriff. There is, the sheriff has suggested we raise our fines because currently the fines, it's a class three misdemeanor. And those fines are currently in the five hundred dollar ballpark. Well, if you're a contractor that has tons and tons and tons of trash, at forty-three dollars a ton or whatever it is now, it may behoove you to pay the five hundred dollar fine and pay the tipping fee. So we're gonna have to get those in line to discourage and have the intended consequences. There also has been some talk like Bedford County, and I don't wanna steal Mr. Hicks' thunder, but Bedford County has a unique approach where it's almost like a red light camera, where we issue simple fines that you either pay it by a certain date or doubles and you can go to court and appeal it, but they've had great success for treating this like a red light camera or a speeding camera. We are entertaining all possibilities.
I've got operations and probably for the past sixty days, everybody says, if you wanna see a good solid waste operation, come see Bedford County. So Dave and I went to Bedford County. I'm gonna do a short slide presentation here for you. That's where Bedford County's always pretty. We have a lot of IT projects there. Usually it's mine, I tell people in there, ID, NT, you can write that down and spell it. We asked Bedford County what their situation was about fifteen years ago, and we got pictures. And as you'll notice, these are not Bedford County, because Bedford County looks exactly like we did everything we did. Their situation has significantly improved. And I'll show you some of their files from two thousand eighteen. You drive up to the Compacker site, it tells you what Compacker sites you're at. I was going to add, signs. They have Compackers at their sites. They don't have open boxes. If it's a couch or a chair or a table, I mean, it goes in Compackers. So they're not burning up there on road with all these open boxes. It's at a box seventy-five percent later. The pictures, Mr. Hicks, did you take those? So they were random, you just stopped at?
I used to work in Bedford County, I thought it was solid morsels there.
This is picture we started with. I'm in Compacker sites, they have a Compacker. So if people know, that's what I know, the cardboard box. They've got boxes of cardboard, glass, plastic, everything else. If you look how clean and nice and neat and clean it is. Now, at this particular site, they have two Compackers. You know, as I mentioned, they put just ninety-nine percent of their waste, it goes into one of those Compackers. And they have one open box and it's full of metal and white. And what we learned, visiting those sites, they manned sites there, unless they were not open top boxes, but they manned sites. They mentioned most, practically all the trash that it did to those Compackers, they said only open boxes were from metal and light goods. Since as we saw, you know, they started, the first site, they just stopped it in a box that they dumped this, this stuff. Our sites are significantly undersized when you look at what they're doing. Now, as I mentioned, their sites are clean, they're well-maintained, everything's painted. They are, let's see, currently recycling cardboard, newspaper, mixed paper, aluminum, steel cans, clear, green and brown bottles and plastic. I mentioned the type included, they've Compackers, several whole cardboard. The biggest thing we saw, they currently are putting about sixteen hundred pounds of solid waste in a cubic yard. We currently average about a thousand pounds. If you look, you know, a, a good landfill should average somewhere from fifteen to seventeen pounds of weight per cubic yard. And what does that do for us if we can get that additional five hundred pounds in our landfill? I mean, extends phase two from twenty-four point seven five years to thirty-seven years. Now, that would allow an additional five hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-four tons of waste. If you look at that, at forty-two dollars a ton, that's about twenty-one million dollars of additional residue in the same space we got right now. Now, we're currently starting a nature budget, we're gonna be putting about four hundred thousand dollars a year aside to cover the cost of closing phase two and starting phase three. Those additional thirteen years, you can use that by about a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to use for Compacker sites or other things.
How are they doing it?
By their operation.
Getting rid of those open boxes.
Size of them to Compack.
No, actually, by, by, it's funny, our, our newspaper has this in it, but we're working a large face. So let's say this table is the working face of our landfill. If we reduce the size of our face to just this side that we're, five of us are on, we by default run over the trash more, we compact more. And, you know, I wanna reiterate what Richard just said, and save twenty-two million dollars every ten years. So we, what we're learning is our practices are not best practices and there are very small operational differences we can make in our practices that can save us a lot of money.
And see, both consultants told us that we can get you to the fifteen hundred pounds all day.
And that's what I do.
We'll be with you on the side.
That's very tough.
And that's with our existing intake.
Yes, sir.
So if we increase our intake and lower the.
More volume, less space.
More volume, less space.
More money.
More money.
More space.
That five hundred pounds, I mean, that should be cheap.
Thirty.
Yes, major.
Yes, major.
Hey, listen, current topics, we're looking at is contract reviews, proper signage, you know, at the five sites, you know, if we open seven, seven or seven, now whatever we decide to do, white goods, drift options, sorting of the garbage, training our site attendants, and expanding recycling, looking at some of our current site designs. I mean, our current sites, looking at, against possible options for bunk items, brush, green boxes, I think we need, we got one green box site that dispensed them in my minutes. The other, we got cat problems, those are problems I was at the landfill, and tires are issues we're looking at right now. And then our committee members and myself as the chair, they smooth it, you know, they might ball it. Our solid waste consultant will be added after July. Of course, and Kelly sent this, and I'm all over. Any other questions? I'll go back and thank all crew committees for the, for the work you've done. And I certainly think it was wonderful, the service of the community that we're trying to improve our practices and get away from those inadequate things we did, which is gonna save the county taxpayers money in the long run and hopefully in the not-too-distant future we can start things by giving them some money back. Request it from all. Mr. Barker?
I think a good thing too is going out, seeing somebody doing better than us and getting ideas. I mean, that, that right there itself saves us many.
I can't tell you how.
Every aspect of government, that's what, you need to always believe in somebody else doing better.
They make money on these. I mean, they do some really interesting stuff.
Do they still use inmate labor if they're sorting?
Yeah, they had probably five or six of them there that day.
Hand sorting cardboard.
Provided those inmates, inmates like to go every day. You just send them a bag of lunch.
Put them to work.
Again, thank all committees for reaching out to others. Yeah, I'm just, go ahead.
So I'm in charge of the PR committee. It's a small committee, but our job is to get the word out and just a couple of things we're doing. One, I do want to say before I say anything, you'll notice on the list of folks that are on these committees, they're not solid waste folks. We're using people from all across county government, from different perspectives, whether it's Karen Hayes or Mark Moore or Susan Dillon, you know, they're not part of that, but do have valuable contributions. On the PR side, we are working every week to get information out. We're using the newspapers, TV, we're doing a media day this week on Thursday, we're gonna have an open house for our citizens. We're making, we're creating opportunities for public comment and passing around some comments, just FYI, that we've received to date. But the most important thing of success is citizen education and information. And so PR is the nucleus to bring together all these functional pieces and to get the information out. We're working, we have hired Ms. Simkus on a time limited basis for the next six months, twenty hours a week, to help us get this message out. So we're really happy and have received quite a good bit. In fact, I just ran back to my desk to grab these things that Holly printed for me and saw there was a note from a gentleman that said, please tell Mr. Smitherman that y'all are doing great work at the landfill. I have some ideas I'd like to share. And that just came in at five o'clock today. So the point is, we're increasing communication with our citizens, we're trying to promote understanding and better education, and we will keep you guys apprised, both in advance and in the rear, when we get these type of comments. We know public relations is a big piece to making this successful. I have to answer the question.
I just, I wanna point out something for the citizens, if they got a question on this. We have a four-year request about the advertisement for the position, the PR position. And in that, it was up to ten thousand dollars in the advertisement, but in reality, we don't intend to spend any more than that.
Now, our contract is actually two thousand dollars. We had to get competitive proposals, of course, so we did one at an arbitrary amount. We wanted to make sure we got valid on the proposals. Ms. Simkus was successful, not only in the most appropriate, but the least expensive of the two. Two thousand dollars over six months.
I give a thought we pay you more than fake it.
Any other questions from Mr. Smithman? Again, thanks for all the work you've done before and again, please keep the Solid Waste Committee and Legislative Committee in the loop. Thank you. All right, we're down to Mr. Rowe.
Good evening, gentlemen and citizens. I just wanted to be able to come before you this evening, just to give you an update. I know this is always a key and hot topic with your constituents and we just wanna be as forthright as possible as far as on where the Internet project is and really also still some of the progress being made as far as with regards to the project itself. Obviously, in your package, you see as far as a press release issued by SES Broadband explaining as far as where they are. I'll be the first to tell you that there has been a delay and that was a conscientious, conscientious delay in the fact that right when we announced that project, you immediately came out with a new generation of LTE devices. We researched it and at that time, we actually said, guys, we'd rather for you to hold off for a couple of months and put on the new technology rather than putting a old technology that you'll have to go immediately right thereafter and take down just because it was uninputted. And so what we're finding and what we've realized in this process is that every, typically every two to three years, particularly a turnover as far as in that generation technology. So the tower, for example, of White Oak, has that latest technology on it. The tower in that area that's going live this week has that estimation and it has that updated equipment on it. And I think as you saw from, and we didn't, like I said, we didn't solicit this at all to be honest with you, I think what you saw from that latest coverage from the WSET and the others, the response and the, I think the outcomes and experiences of customers has been very favorable. And so I think that it's been a success up to this point to have over a hundred houses on the first tower. I mean, that tower pretty much maxed out. And so, like I said, right now, we're, the down area tower just east of Gretna, the company's little. the, uh, company's literally waiting on the venue to come out there, uh, and, uh, and run the final electrical to it, so the equipment's on. We had a last-minute request, uh, from Laurel Grove Fire Department due to, uh, demand, due to a safety concern, and I think this once again shows the partnership that we've been able to create with SCS Broadband, where they have now, that's, that's the third priority. So that tower already has the equipment sitting on it. Uh, the engineering's complete, and once again, we're just waiting on the power to be run to that tower as well, so that tower should be operational within the next fifteen days as well. Our goal with that tower was just to serve the fire department, uh, but we're actually getting some really good, uh, preliminary testing off that tower as the way for the electrical to be run to it. We're looking, we'll actually be able to serve residents, we've been probably modeled that tower as well. And so all that was going on and everybody was focusing on that, we went ahead and applied for a tobacco commission, uh, last mile broadband grant, and we were notified, uh, in the past several weeks of, uh, receiving that grant in the full of request amount. So we were awarded four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars to continue that process. So we were able to demonstrate to the tobacco commission that the business model works, you have a tower, you got a hundred customers, party won, uh, you know, it's a proven commodity. I will say that typically for these projects, and the same for this one here, there has to be a dollar-for-dollar match, um, we didn't feel comfortable coming back to you guys and asking for that. And so we literally told the, uh, and were able to negotiate with, um, SCS Broadband and saying, well, we're giving you a subsidized lease rate now on the towers, right? We're not giving them anything. They're paying us a very modest amount to be on our vertical assets, and they agreed that there was a value there, so they agreed to pay for the match. So this is a four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar gift to us for SCS Broadband, uh, as they are paying half of the, uh, cost. Where we are right now, what the actual grant itself is, this is a first grant of its kind from the tobacco commission. I'm still not one hundred percent comfortable with the liability language. Typically, when the tobacco commission grant comes to the local town, we're responsible, we're on the hook, so we still have not signed off on the grant with the tobacco commission as we still are trying to identify any possible liabilities, any possible loopholes that could come back and bite us. So at the end of the day, we want all of that liability not to be in Pennsylvania County. I can't guarantee to you guys what the tape rate's gonna be, uh, I can't guarantee the equipment, 'cause I can tell you from doing this previously, the number one risk to this equipment is this time of year's lightning. So we go out and we pay four hundred thousand dollars of equipment, we have a bad lightning storm, it's hit, who's liable for that? So these are all the kind of questions that we're going through right now. As part of that process, um, we actually teamed up with, reached out and worked with Halifax County to our east, and they too were awarded, and they're, you know, further behind as far as in the process, but they're working with SCS Broadband as well. We introduced SCS to the area, we've since made connections to, uh, with SCS to Halifax, and they're working, they're paying SCS, uh, to work in Halifax as well. So in order to ensure that we have full transparency, uh, we have entered into a information sharing agreement, which is also in your packet, with Halifax County. So that way, we know exactly what they know, they know what we know, because at the end of the day, the wireless signals don't stop at our borders. So that way, if there's a place in Halifax County where they can place a tower to better serve Pennsylvania County while still serving their folks, we know about it, we can help and ask them to do, uh, that. Same thing with, uh, our tower, for example, the Mount Airy Tower, uh, one of the key, uh, things and aspects that Halifax County wants to be able to do is to serve a BMB location in northern part of the county. Just so happens that, uh, that Mount Airy Tower can do that, and so it allows them to be able to share that with us. So, um, we just wanted to make sure that you were aware that that agreement had been signed, uh, and just to give you and the public an update that things are rolling along and then after the Laurel Grove Tower, Talons is up next on the list, and, uh, with the grant that was received, we can actually now proceed with what our plan phase two was after these initial seven towers were up. So that's where things are.
Any questions from Mr. Rose?
How many air miles will a, will a tower, so, I know it's not a vertical tower to tower, but this in general, do we have an idea?
It really is dependent upon the geography, and, and so the, the real answer is, I can serve the entire county with one tower on White Oak Mountain, right? Because at the end of the day, it's all about line of sight. So as long as I get something above the tree line that can look back to White Oak Mountain, it can serve it. So what we're looking at here, then our goal going into this with phase two, was to be able to serve ninety percent of the county. And we feel like that's a reasonable expectation. There will always be the one person that's in a hole surrounded by a thousand pine trees, um, that you just cannot get to easily, and we'll work with that when that happens.
So in those cases, curious, um, of course, pine trees are, tell them both, I'm imagining someone's instructed, tall pole.
Exactly. It's, it's called a catapult, and that's what this phase two of the tobacco commission grant does, so that's how we were able to keep costs down. So most locales are focused on building big, tall, massive towers. My approach is, and our approach is, is to go in and make it more redundant by doing smaller poles, so that way if one tower gets hit by lightning, the whole thing comes down. When you have twenty-three poles, which is what we were able to pay for by this, you know, you typically a pole, catapult, serve about three miles around the site fairly well with hotspot and additional services. Um, so, you know, what do you expect to be able to serve? I mean, right now, that White Oak Tower's serving customers as far away as seven miles.
How many, is that per one hundred on that tower?
Over a hundred already on that tower.
Does that max a tower out, or does it have additional?
Typically, typically per tower, you're looking at somewhere in the range of a hundred and fifty to two hundred residences per tower, depending on the direction of where those customers are.
Other questions from Mr. Rose? Thank you, Mr. Rose. All right. Business meeting discussion items.
I have, yes, sir.
Okay. Close session.
I'll take that. Um, tonight during the work session, we have three closed sessions, and we'll retire over to the county administration, conference room for that. We have two, uh, closed sessions with legal authorities, Virginia Code Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A eight. Consultation, legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. The subject matter for the first item is opioid litigation. Purpose is legal consultation regarding potential retention of outside legal representation for opioid litigation. The second, um, closed section under legal consultation, the subject matter is Pennsylvania Pet Center. The purpose is legal consultation regarding potential execution of Pet Center lease amendment. The third closed session is a different legal authority, it's Virginia Code Section two point two thirty-seven eleven A five. It's discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries' interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Subject matter is project. Med purpose is discussion of potential performance agreement. At this time, it's appropriate for the board to entertain a motion and a second discussion to go into closed session for the aforementioned items.
I make a motion, we end the closed session, uh, to discuss the items that, uh, county attorney, um, may have.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, sent by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. All right, I'm gonna read the certification and hopefully he'll, he'll join us. We entered back into open session at six forty-seven PM. Being resolved at a meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors on June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the board hereby certifies a recorded vote at the best of each board member's knowledge on the public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified the motion authorized in closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the code, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure, the statement shall be recorded in the minutes of the board. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
And, um, I will wait around for Mr. Warren. Y'all are free to leave.